If they weren't doing their job, they're dishonest.
If they're asked to do it, they should do it.
Instead of actually having a conversation. This is the list right here that I'm talking about. So if you guys had some kind of private meeting, obviously I don't know anything about it. I don't know what you're talking about. And the clue. Never heard about it. Like a lot of this conversation. Excuse me, may I describe?
Alright.
Yep, yep.
We're open for public discussion right now. Public concerns or comments, anybody? Yes, sir? Pay day?
About, I'm gonna guess, six weeks ago, you guys made a motion to authorize the purchase of a iPad with a memory of like two fifty-six or whatever that is. And you authorized three hundred dollars, not to go over three hundred dollars. I wondered, did that work out for you?
Did that ever get purchased? I might have to go look at the basis segment, but it was under three hundred.
I don't think it was an iPad.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, was it?
It was an iPad with two hundred and fifty-six.
I thought it was just a tablet, but my mistake.
But it was, it came in under the three hundred dollars.
I thought it was a Fire.
One with two fifty-six memory or whatever that is for hundreds.
I think it was an Amazon Fire. Like a tablet, not an iPad. It's not Apple.
It does about half of one of them.
We're just mixing up language. It's a tablet.
It's a tablet?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, I thought, man, if you could get it for that, I'm gonna buy.
Anybody else? Okay. Now, moving on. Robin? Robin Baker? Sally?
Okay. A couple, a lot of things here, guys. Um. I sent a letter to John Foster about his building in the corner. He told me that he's already been talked to and it canceled through, uh, the way it was locked up. But I'm not finding no records of this. Um. I did have Lisa go through the minutes to try to pinpoint, and you didn't find them, right?
Just the one per bike.
Mm-hmm. But no. Not approved of it.
I remember them coming in here and saying, hey, we did A, B, and C. And we said, okay, we'll go look at it. I remember laughing when I saw it. It was like a two-by-four, another two-by-four.
The whole.
Huge brick wall.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Structural engineer.
From what I could see from the ground.
But I know immediately after they put that in, I got a phone call from somebody that used to walk down that sidewalk every day and they were complaining because they were fearing for their life, I believe rightfully so. It looks pretty dangerous.
You know, leaning the other direction now?
Which part of it?
Okay, I'll do some more review and searching on that. Thanks for that. Um. Two eleven Pine, we get the resolution. That's the house behind um the RV. Where they were supposed to come tonight. Uh, he can't because he works in North Dakota, but he did call me. Uh, they're gonna check on demo in the house. And see about getting it out of there and making it a lot. For now. He is gonna, next time he is, he's gonna board up the windows that are broken out, make it more secure. And get the yard cleaned up. Cause I told him I could only do part of it because of all the trash and the branches in there. So that's an update on that resolution. Would you ask him the timeframe on tearing down the house? Would you talk to him? Yeah, I can. I can ask him, um, he was gonna do some checking. There you go. Um. Haley's here. On her resolution. Um, I will say she's done a wonderful job. Her husband has got the place picked up. It's looking better. Lisa said they paid. Their utilities up.
Well, you have to ask Becky.
Becky?
They are paid.
They are paid.
Well. Yes.
Okay. So. Where do we go from here?
Do you have utilities turned on now, Haley?
We're waiting on the guys. I mean, we just got the payment, so Barry hasn't been.
Okay. Do we know when that's gonna get done?
We will inform Barry tomorrow. Gets paid and needs to be reinstated.
So they haven't been told yet?
We just got the payment, yeah.
Just got the payment, so.
Okay.
Okay, then the next one was Joel Baron. Um, I went to serve in the papers. He's already got the truck out of the lot, out of his property.
Joel Bryan?
I mean, yeah, sorry. So the truck, he has got it moved, so that one's good. Now, uh. This next one is the Benson. John Benson's place up here by Joss's house that we did the resolution on. It is in working on foreclosure. They've been emailing me for the last couple of weeks, um, the code compliance is wanting to know what the cost of violations with the roof and the garage is. I told him we haven't set no amount. They asked me about demo, if they had to rebuild, and I said, no, you didn't have to rebuild the garage. If you're gonna take it completely out, I just need a permit if that's what you guys are gonna do and have. Um, then she asked if they can hold off until after the foreclosure with no city penalties. Or charges. What they're wanting to do is they're wanting to let this ride and let the new owners. So where do I, what do I do? Where do I go?
Well, currently it's in their name. It's their responsibility.
The foreclosure company?
Well.
The bank or whoever's foreclosing it, so that still is their legally, their responsibility. Right? That's what I tell them.
Cause they've taken possession of the building at this point. Then, yeah, it's their responsibility.
Okay.
That sounds like a common question.
That's so I can bring this meeting and have. We can just say it. It's your responsibility.
Wouldn't be no different than a funeral home up there. You want to still call back?
Yeah, I, that's true, cause we, they're the ones that took care of the fine. Well, clearly wasn't a fine, but they got it known. And they took it over. I, I'll send this, I'll email Todd. I can send it to him and everything to him and ask him. True. I know. So.
Is it open in any way, like, can?
Garage is.
Maybe our kids get into it?
Did you? Yeah, kids can get it. I can walk right into it, but you got all those trash bags in there that everybody stands has that.
That's why I was thinking, I sure like somebody to go board it up.
Well, they're gonna I mean, they're gonna have to board the roof up. And I mean, it needs a lot of.
It's not in good shape at all.
Yeah, I mean, let, put it this way, Tim, I'm real cautious when I go around it. Um, trying to get pictures is I mean, there's one of one of the No, I got more than that. Those are the old ones.
I know it's really good shape.
Yeah, it's.
I was just worrying about wandering children.
I, I agree. I agree with you on that. Um. That's something else I can tell them, that they're gonna put this off the other, they're gonna have to secure that building.
I would like that.
And we can do that.
They're putting up a going in or sign that doesn't cut it?
No, because some of the signs I put up already are gone. So. I think we should just push them and make them take care of the issue now and not put it on somebody else, like.
I like that.
Giving them extra time until it becomes somebody else's problem that we're still going after is ridiculous. I mean, they're passing the buck. The way I. They own it, they're the owners, that's what they do, they know it, they're just trying to pass it off somewhere else, it just.
New owners take over, you'd probably have started a process all over again, wouldn't you?
Nope.
Nope, I can keep going as it is. But they're gonna want, they're gonna come in and wanna request more time as well, and it's just gonna be.
Yeah.
I mean, it can be falling in by the time. I mean, I can go that route, tell them that, or?
Yeah, they need to take care of it. Without delay.
Alright, please. No problem, okay? The rest is later on.
Or you, that takes care of your two items on the hearing as well, right?
No. Phillips and Haley? Oh. Takes care of these two? Oh, well, I didn't have that part. I didn't get that new one.
That was on there yesterday. Anyway.
Not on my copy. But I printed that one.
We'll look into it. Alright, new city business. Doc transfer Morton to Gillian, or either of those folks here?
This is a second tier property that um, buyer has signed off that he's read all the documents. Um, and it brings to them, if you will, so.
This is a doc that we've had pinned to him that we had ordered to have fixed and over the three-year period of time with the extended time that we've given her. It has not been fixed. So I don't know if you should pass this without knowing what the new owner's plans are to do, or if they're even aware that the doc is.
I mean, Robin did tell me she was going to pursue the, or with steps to direct, but that's, I don't have anything in writing from Robin, so.
And she has not talked to the new owners, so.
Doesn't get more of it.
I'm gonna move to, uh, add it to the lake meeting.
And what information board do you want sent to them so they'll have that ready for us?
Um, Robin knows what information it is, but to say it out loud again, it's.
No, it's okay.
Okay.
It will be, uh, September twenty-second.
So I'll move to, do we have to do it?
Did you see the note on here about it? Contacted a local handyman and she was waiting to hear from that individual needs someone who is affordable, so I would assume that it's not gonna be fixed unless
Yeah.
The new owners decide to do so.
So table it to the next meeting, is it?
So that we know what's going on.
Do we need a motion for that?
Really, we dropped the bomb, we should have held that knock off.
Brett did make a motion.
So I'll second that. I'm not in favor of, uh, so. Not, not promised, but taken care of.
Alright, motion by Brett to table the five Lingermer way doc transfer till September twenty-second, seconded by Jason. Those in favor? Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, Amy Williams here?
No, she's not. She couldn't be here, but I made copies of the why she was here last night from you guys. She, this is what's her update on what's going on with her building. She's asked us to hold off on the next deal on her agenda till after the twenty-second approving the permit.
I agree. This letter here. Do you might have any objections to that?
No.
Nope.
Motion?
I'll move to postpone till the, after the twenty-second. Till the engineers inspection.
Postpone. Josh Cott's permit?
Yes.
I'll second that. No, we're waiting.
No. Get it done, right?
Is Josh here?
Okay, uh, motion by Brett to delay the approval of Josh Cott's request to continue working until after the inspection on nine twenty-two and the report that's released, it says it's safe to do so. Seconded by Jason. Those in favor? Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry to have to ask you all that, Michelle. Hey, Josh Cott is not here. Lake rental.
I forwarded emails to you after the last meeting and I apologize, the way John started it, I thought he had emailed everybody, but anyway. John has vacated the rental house at the lake and he has donated washer dryer, um, couch and a chair. Um, anyway, but he did buy a new refrigerator back in April. And didn't know if the council would consider some of that expense towards trade for his last month's rent and utilities.
I'm in favor of that.
Will you give your receipt?
Yep.
I don't have that.
It was did I not forward that one?
I think you did, but.
It was like a seven hundred dollar refrigerator. Seven forty-four twenty-six is what he paid, so. With tax and delivery.
Just kept that full amount towards his last month's rent. You turn this?
Yeah, the rent's like four hundred. Something like that.
Look at all the other work he's been out there.
And he's literally moved the front of the lake for years.
And he's leaving a washer dryer and other things in the unit as well, so I don't see why that's a issue. So, don't worry for me.
Does anybody have any personal items that belong out there that, that was on loan or anything of this nature? Sometimes that happens.
Yeah, there's a wood stove out there that was mine, but I guess not, but I don't have anything to do with it. I mean. He was gonna give me three hundred and fifty dollars for it and then he, he just took it and said, I'll give it back to you when I'm done. But that was years ago. He probably forgot it was mine.
Do you want, or do you leave it out there?
I'll leave it out there. I don't have any place to put it.
Okay, just have a motion then on, uh, the lake rail. The proposed.
Oh, uh, I've moved that we accept.
John's offer?
John's offer for the seven hundred and forty-four dollars and whatever change was.
You have a second?
Half his rent, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're not paying.
I mean, has he paid all of his rent? Does he owe rent?
Well, he owes for August, but then he has some utilities as well.
So then we'll be taking off the rent and utilities?
Right.
I'd have to look at what his utilities are. I don't know what they are off the top of my head, if it comes up to seven hundred and forty-four dollars or if it exceeds that.
Considering the countless hours that he's mowed up, there for nothing.
Okay, that's good. I'm just clicking.
I wouldn't mind if you guys wanna give me something for this, though. I don't know what condition it's in right now either, so.
I'm about to nix this if I don't get a second.
Sorry, a second? I thought we had a second.
No, no, you do not.
I didn't know we were just walking.
So are you, are you saying you second that?
I did, just.
Okay, alright. Motion by Jason to accept offer from John Taylor at the lake rental. Rent, utilities in exchange for the refrigerator, seconded by Annie. Those in favor?
Yes.
Brett, did you?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, next item, first desktop computer.
I think Chris and everybody have, maybe not, you know, about the the clerk's computer is not, uh, compatible, or that's not the right word, for Windows eleven.
So it didn't, the, the forced update didn't work out, is what you mean? He said he was gonna try.
I didn't, I don't know about that. I just know he sent an email that that computer was not compliant for with Win, so just on the horizon, there's gonna be an expense for a different desktop for the clerk's office. I would assume.
That makes sense, since Windows ten does.
Right, in October. Yeah.
I think we need to also decide on the server, right? He did send bids for those. Have we already had that conversation? I'm forgetting, or?
Are you talking about emails? Is that what you say, server? Is that what you mean?
No.
Okay.
Um, I know that's later in the thing. It's, it was part of what he was telling us, but he did actually email us a bid, so maybe we need to get that on the, not tonight, but agenda.
So do you want bids for prices from Chris or other places or for the computer?
I think he usually gives us a couple of options, doesn't he?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know, I've never had this experience.
I know when, when we, we were talking about the server upgrading it, replacing it, he was thought, he would give us a couple of options there.
Probably asked him for some pricing at that time, but.
No, and he was gonna try to make the, that computer live longer, was what it was. So he wasn't replacing it currently. He just couldn't get it to update and they basically forced it, so you can no longer continue using it without the update. So we're at the point where, because he couldn't get it to work, we do need to replace it. That's what he was telling us in that year. The servers and the things that we were replacing, he did give us bids for that, so we probably ought to put that on next meeting, and I can talk to you about that too, cause I know he sent several emails. He might not have them yet, so, yeah. Um, I'm fine with him getting bids for it. And then if we're not happy with that, we can go further if you.
I was already bringing the bids, where I must have misunderstood him.
For the servers, yes, but not for the computer. I don't see any.
He was trying, he was trying to force the upgrade on his clerk's computer to prevent having to buy one and save money.
Correct.
Okay. Moving on. Fall Festival sponsor. There's a letter from the Fall Festival in your packets.
Lisa, what was it last year that we done had?
I would have to go look it up.
Could you please?
Yep.
I think it was a thousand.
Taking a minute to get one.
Terry, can we move on while she is looking?
Yeah. Uh, migration to M three sixty-five slash Google email.
That's true. We visited with the Fed on the phone today and he pressed about that.
Yeah, exactly what he's bringing in, uh, third year Friday this week. Make changes on updating.
Well, he moved, I called him because I was managing three emails.
Yeah.
And I said, that's too much. I just need one. And he said, that's what he's trying to do. Is trying to get us away from Google and all onto.
Microsoft.
Right, yep.
And I guess he needs your guys' approval.
Oh, yeah. Do, do we need to make a motion for that, or do we just express our approval? Because I think we had talked about that before.
Cover all your bases.
He was gonna save us like sixty bucks.
I thought that was done.
I think that, yeah.
Well, he's gotta make the transition over, cause it's.
Yeah, he was gonna save money for us to do that, champ.
So, yeah, that makes sense. Go for it.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll make, I'll make for approve it.
Approve, what are we approving?
The migration to.
Migration, M three sixty-five.
Motion by.
From Google. Sorry, from Google.
From Google.
Motion by.
Brett, second by me.
By Jason to, to approve the migration to M three sixty-five.
Yes.
Those in favor? Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Fall Festival donation was a thousand dollars last year.
I'll move for the same donation this year.
Double timing.
Here's our festival. Second.
Motion by Brett to donate one thousand dollars to the Fall Festival. Which is going to occur
The last Saturday of October.
Saturday in October. One thousand dollars, seconded by Jason.
I'm sorry, go ahead and finish that.
It's okay. Do you have a question or comment?
Not about the donation, no.
Those in favor?
In addition to that, Stephanie sent a email this after, or this morning, I guess it was, they're asking for a temporary permit. You see me for, and it's, yeah.
I think it was on. I thought it was on before. Thinking of rodeo, probably.
The rodeo, yes. But September one, September one, everything changed with alcohol beverage control and so we're working to see what moving from this point forward, all applicants have to apply directly to Department of Revenue, and then if the Department of Revenue approves it, they will send the permit back to the applicant and then applicant has to bring it to City Hall to get their stamps for license. The license for, like. Yeah, so anyway.
Kinda like what I did, is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, but it's changed now.
This is after.
Changed since.
I don't know with the temporary permit, like you had approved for the Labor Day. Something's changed, so we're working on that.
The order's changed, or the city doesn't do it all?
Right, it's, it's up to the applicant to submit the application to ABC, so, but anyway. So somebody moved, seconded to approve the temporary.
And they already all voted yes.
Give me, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I, I even heard Michelle go like, yes.
Yeah, last, okay.
Alright, next up, Wabunsee County Historical Society. You all have a letter in your packet as well, and basically, uh, got information, uh, late last week that Wabunsee County uh, Historical Society was planning an event at Lake Wabunsee on our property without our knowledge.
I'll move to a good event.
I just want everybody to know what was going on, and then we can take the motion, okay? Basically, they're doing a reenactment and they're gonna have artifacts and, and other things on display at the Lutheran Church. Um, they're gonna have reenactment going on. And my only concern to them was where are you gonna park when you get out there? And the ground's wet, we don't want you parking on the grass, obviously used that to tear that up. And it was requested that if they make these requests in advance, uh, so the council can approve them in advance, it's to make sure that we don't conflict with another event that might be scheduled out there. I have no doubt that the council will approve this, but it's still something that they need to be aware of. The first one is in October. Uh, I'm looking for the date on, I know they got another one.
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth and then October nineteenth.
October nineteenth.
Okay, that's what it is. So that's what that's about.
September thirteenth.
Yes.
Yeah, this weekend.
It's a pay only, you pay in advance to go, so you can't just go out there, and they're not really gonna decide to reenact, they're just gonna discuss and show and stuff like that. Reenacting sounds pretty morbid, but.
Yeah, it's.
It's all related to the barracks, right?
Yes. P O W, P O W can't, barracks, yeah.
For that event. I'll second. Motion to approve the Wabunsee County Historical Society to hold an event at Lake Wabunsee September thirteenth and October nineteenth by Brett, seconded by Jason. Those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's still open slots for the nineteenth, but none for September. People who are interested in contacting me now, huh?
Okay, the Cook Building Sidewalk area request is next.
I'll move to approve their request. Do they ask, do they tell you how long they needed it for, Lisa?
No, they just said they would be in town this, in the next few days to start working on it.
I like all this morning, they were supposed to start this morning, but the rain probably wiped that out, but so she thinks they might even start tomorrow.
Are we supposed to be blocking the street, or are they supposed to be blocking?
They do.
They're not in the state. I mean, their workers are, of course, but.
Aware of that.
They just asked out of, you know, if we would. They just asked out of, you know, if we would do it.
Just like those, the street blockages.
I mean, it doesn't have to be at tents, just, you know, like-
Those are the states, we don't use our own.
No, we have our own white ones that are down at the shop.
That are just like a simple, I mean, it's like a bike funeral home, there's a road barricade, okay, we've got those, so.
Does this meet the same requirements? This is kind of a setup like Josh Cott's doing, right?
I'm just curious.
It's not gonna be like that, from what I understand, right?
No, they're repairing.
Are they removing those?
The wall, the foundation.
They just don't worry about walking in front of while they're working up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Prevent injuries.
Okay, something does fall.
I moved to approve to be able to block it off, but I'm stuck at how long this is gonna be, do we wanna do it for a month?
I did send a text asking for a timeline.
Okay, why haven't I been informed? I'm the one that sent the letter out.
I didn't know anything about that, sorry.
I mean, I thought this fell under my position.
I wasn't aware of a letter that was sent.
Neither. They just, they just questioned that, that they're gonna be working on it, wanted us, wanted to know if we could block it off, so nobody be walking. Possibly stop and fall on them.
And they emailed yesterday?
Probably Monday. I'm sorry.
You may buy me a coffee or two.
I'll second either way.
Okay.
It needs to be blocked.
For a month, to start off with, and revisit it after that.
In the day you'd indicate that it would take that long? I had the impression just a day or two is all they-
Says they're starting work in a day or so, so it doesn't actually tell you.
It didn't get a timeline.
There's no way they could fix that in two months.
Good luck, I know, that's what I was thinking.
I'll find out tomorrow, I'll call.
But at this point, it's up to a month, is that what you said, Brett?
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't block it up right, then then the city's responsible.
That's, that's, that's the other thing. Yes, yes, it needs to be blocked, but we should not be the ones blocking.
No, they should be.
They need to be blocking it off, because otherwise that makes us liable for-
Should be maybe temporarily, and then when they're here, we could go tell them they need to know.
They need to hire somebody, they're responsible to do it. It says that in our orders. And they should have the staff anyway, any contractor should have the staff.
Yeah.
And they might, they might.
Yeah.
Yeah, they shouldn't have it.
We will approve them to do it, but we're not gonna be responsible for that.
Saying, I really don't think we have them.
Four months.
I ask Mike for it every year at Fall Festival, we borrow from him.
When I did it for the street dances, I thought I had to go down and get it myself.
I didn't, wasn't aware there was it. He's got a few cones, which he brought me, but I don't remember there being any kind of fencing.
Fencing.
He's always saying there wasn't any.
It's not fencing.
It's not fencing.
It's just block, block.
Blocking, so it's like a-
Two by four by, yes, exactly doing some, like two by four by twenty foot board that says road closed.
Put two.
So it's a song, okay.
Are they going on the street?
Yeah, the sidewalk, closing the sidewalk.
Okay.
I mean, I think we probably need to dig into that a little bit, because I do think there are occasions where the city of Topeka blocks their own sidewalk, but it must be for their own work, I would assume, so.
Yeah.
If this is their work, then I think then.
Still our responsibility to look out for our citizens, though, right?
We are.
Which is why we approve them to block it off.
But we're requiring another one to pay for its own fencing, and then saying we're gonna, so that's a little-
Yeah.
I mean, I'm in favor of being fair, so that's, they do need to block it.
They probably should, and the street, and you know, people love it, it's not blocked out.
So it's-
Needs to be blocked off like Josh Cott's.
Need a motion in a second, please.
You have it. Brett moved and Jason seconded.
To, to permit the blockage.
Right.
To permit the blockage, but not to do it.
Not to do it.
Oh.
To permit the blockage.
We're not doing this, we're not providing to do it.
Okay.
The same, basically, the same thing we did for Josh Cott. We permitted him to do it, we're not responsible for that.
Okay.
Then they need to put it on hold until they can find a way to block it.
The other thing, rinse some fencing from Josh.
Okay, who made the motion? Brett?
Brett.
We'll just block the hallway across the street. Shut the town down, let's go.
Do we want, do we not want the legislature to handle it?
We're, hold on a second, Cheryl, let's vote on it.
Yeah, motion by Brett to, to approve the sidewalk blockage at one seventeen Main Street for up to thirty days, seconded by Jason.
Barrier's another word, just out of the way.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Give those in favor.
Yes.
What we're gonna say is, is Becky, you should probably turn that information over to Sally.
Yes.
Head it.
So Sally's gonna contact them first thing in the morning.
Okay, next up, whether or continuing council business, cameras at City Hall.
With my understanding that to get bids to repair the cameras, and I just thought, well, I, I actually reached out to Dolly and then didn't get a response, and I understand she was not available, so I reached out to Chris to see if he installed them.
He did. I talked to her about hers.
And Chris did not install them here, and so I asked Justin Rush, and he, both Chris and Justin indicated that Mike installed the cameras here, so I didn't know where else to reach for estimate to get them repaired. There's an email from Justin and Chris in your pocket that stated that.
Is it just a one cap five cable?
According to Justin's email, I think that's correct. I don't, I mean, that's-
He said it was pretty easy to install, right? Justin, if I remember right, from the email. Because what was, what did Mike say?
Doesn't have the tools, and he doesn't have the training provided by the city.
Provided by the city to do that.
So I don't know where to turn for repairs, or, but anyway, just thought I would share that information with you.
Okay, next up, continuing cost-saving measures for the city. Annie, a few meetings ago, I suggested a possible solution to eliminate the overtime on the weekends. Your comment was that the guys would have split off days, and you didn't want that, and I agree, they probably do not need split off days. So another option I come up with would be three employees, three schedules, one on Monday through Friday, one on Sunday through, through-
Thursday.
Thursday, and the other one would be a Tuesday through Saturday, and that would get all seven days covered and no overtime on the weekends. That alone, alone would save the city at least four thousand dollars a year in salary. I say at least because it exceeds three and a half hours on Saturday. And that's what I'm gonna propose for a, an additional money-saving opportunity for the city. Very simple fix. Does anybody have any comments about that?
Just a, just a question there, um, do all three employees have the same certifications now?
They do not.
Gas and water?
Not all three, do not, no.
So there's gonna be some overtime, because something's gonna fail on the weekend when somebody's not there.
And, and those, and those emergency cases, yes, it's understandable, but under normal conditions, we would save four thousand a year.
No, I understood, I just, when I-
Yeah, no, you're correct, you're right. If there's a situation that shows up on the day that the, say, the gas has a problem, then one of the two people that are certified would have to deal with it, if the third person happens to be off that day when it happens. And to take that a step further, those assignments will be based on seniority, so the longer the person's been here, they get first choice on the week hours that they wanna work, and so on down to the junior employee.
I have a question.
Sure.
So on those two days or whatever they are, the non-certified person, the two that are certified, would one of them be on call? Will, will it be like, you're on call this day in case there's urgency from one of those two people?
The city of Askerich doesn't currently pay on call.
Oh.
And that already happens, like, there was water pressure, she's at the lake, and both people that were certified have the day off, and so it just kinda had to sit.
I was just asking that because I just heard somebody in a few meetings before say that there wasn't anybody there.
We're not technically supposed to have two people with the same certification, so that we don't run into that thing, but it does happen.
We're also not supposed to have staff on call without on-call pay.
Uh, uh, most companies have somebody on call, I just didn't, I was just asking, no worries.
Well, that's my additional two cents worth on cost-saving measures at this point. Um, nobody has anything else, we'll move on.
All right, are we on?
No, and, no.
Continuing business?
No, we're still under, one more thing, it's Annie's, Annie's turn.
One more thing, it's me.
Annie's turn.
I just wanted to revisit this, partly because I forgot that there was a signature that I need from you, Terry, but last meeting, we approved to apply for a grant through the Kansas Water, what's the O mean, K W O?
K W O.
Um, in order to, um, do the technical assistance, which is the design for a new water plant. This is engineering, um, sorry, hold on. It's almost a million dollar grant, I think it's eight hundred ninety-five thousand, I cannot remember the total number. We do have onboard, that's not something that's been approved yet, but they're willing to do the project, so that I can bring that back later at a later date. But we did approve that Brett Wagner of G A S do the grant application, which he has actually volunteered to do for free. So I do have a paper for you. Do you guys have any questions on it?
And why did he do that? Why did he volunteer to do it for free?
Because he just worked with us on the C D B G, and he's excited to have more, um, programs with us.
And what is Shawbeaton gonna charge us to do the design?
That'll be part of the grant. I says, I said, it's almost eight hundred ninety-five, it's eight hundred ninety-five thousand, I believe. So this is zero cost to the city.
Okay. Where do, I know we approved it at the last meeting, and of course, we need a new water plant and stuff, but I'm feeling no transparency here as far as what's going on, because we approved something.
Ironically, it was actually brought to Terry, uh, what, a year or two ago?
About, uh-
This exact grant application.
No, there's something else that brought me a couple of years ago, and I did approach Mike about it, and he said that we had a grant that we were working on from twenty eighteen, and for me let it go, and he would take care of it.
Actually, no.
Actually, that's what he's there to contradict me.
I've been involved, actually, in this process, and he went to apply for it in December, because it's actually a rolling grant at this time, this money will go away. But he went to apply for it, you said that you wanted to have Flint Hills Regional Council take a look at it, and you submitted it to Holly, I believe her name was at the time. And she actually made some edits and sent it back to you, and then no further action was taken, so the ball actually got dropped with you not submitting it.
Yeah, I'd like to work on that, kind of prove it.
I mean, I was at the meeting when you asked her about it, but I can't prove that, because it was all verbal. And then the next time, we actually did apply for it, following that, six months later, it was denied, and Shawbeaton has repeatedly reached out to K W O to find out why. Not very transparent on that. K W O's not really a very, like, workable as far as, like, why, but if you want more information, I literally have a massive email that can provide that. What do you want? What's the question? Actually, absolutely.
Just any information on it, because we're going blind here. I mean, Tim, do you know any information on this?
Didn't know anything about it.
I'm just aware that Annie's the only one that knows anything about it. Do you know anything about it?
Just kind of what we've all talked about here.
We haven't talked about this at all. We haven't talked about any of this.
I wonder if he would have known about it. Terry didn't say that he was trying to use the same grant for dredging the water.
We absolutely would have, because we actually weren't sure that Brett was gonna provide this writing for free. So he already had said to them it would be dependent on council. Doing that, the last time it was applied for, Mike wrote it himself, so he did that for us without you know, extra pay, grant rights for us, but whatever.
And he did it on our time, right?
But he sure wrote a grant. Do you have any expertise on grant writing? Because I sure have a whole world of it.
The question was, did he do it on city time? Was he paid by the city?
Would he work for us for free? Would you allow that?
So then your argument that Mike did it, and without compensation is not there, because he was paid to do it, it sounds to me like.
I didn't say he wasn't compensated, I said he wasn't compensated as a grant writer. But he did do this for us, and did not get through, so he would like help from other experts to get it in. Who are both willing to do it free at this time, up until the grant is approved, and then they will be paid from the grant.
And I don't have a problem with him doing that. What I have a problem with is that he's not coming in and communicating with us.
Well, he was communicating with the mayor.
And communicate to us.
But we're gonna get a denial out of that anyway.
We are, because he hasn't communicated with me for over a year and a half.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, it's evident by all the emails I send to council members weekly.
I wonder why. He's been presented on a regular basis by you, so.
Yeah, I'm sure he is, I'm sure he is.
You're doing it right now, saying he didn't talk to you about this.
He didn't, he didn't. He came in here one night, said a whole bunch of things.
I'm sure you could dig back in the email, the one that he sent on to Holly, so have her review it, and then find out if I do.
I probably did.
You asked her about it in front of you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something.
Lose this, because we're arguing about it early.
Hang on, I'm gonna say something else, too.
Yeah.
There's something else, there's something else that the city of Askerich has to do. If they don't get this other project done, then we're not gonna have the water to supply every resident that buys water from the city.
That is absolutely not true.
It's bullshit.
You don't think so?
It's bullshit.
You got more evaporation going off of there than you're pumping out of there, check the stats.
No, he's talking about this dredging grant payday, then.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, okay, well.
It might sell clear, and you wouldn't have any water, but right now, it's not that way.
Well, fortunately for us, we can apply for both at the same time, but we do need to make sure that that dredging grant application does not have anything that would apply to this water treatment facility, period.
Are you certain we can apply for both?
Yeah, I've had them call and check and double check.
I already know that, too, that she's correct.
Sure. I will forward this email to all of you, so you can see.
And we just have to head to the next meeting and talk to us about it.
Who?
Mike.
Brett Wagner would be the one writing the grant.
Okay.
I can ask him, he's actually available by phone if you want to, right now.
Rural Water District One, by the way, is requesting fifteen thousand gallons of water a day extra right now, and we don't have that capacity to give it to them.
Which is why this is so important, much more than the dredging.
Which is why, long term, it's important that the lake gets dredged, too. All right, let's move on. Water pressure at Lake Brex. Who is that?
Oh, I have that added, because I've had a couple of big, very people stop me at my work, right? But anyway, apparently, a couple of months ago, we had a water pressure issue out at the lake. Both of our certified employees that dealt with that were not working. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct, that they went to the barrack when we got, when I got the call on the weekend.
In fixing it, they put some type of regulator on the barracks feed to the water. This is all information that I am getting from barrack residents, not actual city employees, because I, so I don't know. But they have a regulator on the water, and it has significantly lowered the pressure to the water out at the barracks for all the rest of the residents. Apparently, they put it on because a couple of the barracks residents couldn't take the pressure, so they put the regulator on so that they wouldn't be having their issues, and now all of the barrack residents have apparently low water pressure, and by that I mean half or less, they say. So I just wanted to put it on there to bring it up. Does anybody else know anything on it?
I don't know nothing of it.
Okay.
How, how do those run out there? Is it like one, one main for all the barracks? Does each barrack have its own meter?
Yes, every meter, every barrack has their own meter.
Because they, that way they can shut them off on the winter time they drain them, cause not anymore.
Not anymore, the city passed it four months, few years ago.
But it used to, yeah.
It used to be able to turn off water in the winter if they weren't gonna be there, but, so yes, every barrack has their own meter.
So we should be able to have whichever barrack was having an issue with too much pressure.
Well, you have a barrack, Lisa. Do you, have you been out there to?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not been there.
Joe, you have a barrack? The water pressure at the barracks, has it?
Town, so we hardly have to go. I mean, we go out there, but we don't.
I don't know why they put a regulator on it.
They all pay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
You put them on each one.
If, if we all have a barrack, and, and I'm having too much pressure, my pipes can't, then why don't I buy a regulator and put it on my side of the meter? Done. You guys are totally unaffected.
I just don't, it doesn't sound correct to me, doesn't sound right to you.
Well, I mean, Mike told me they put a regulator, I mean, they were trying to tweak it to, yeah, but I don't know where this regulator, I don't know where the main is, I think that's
It doesn't sound, oh, you did. So it sounds like it just tweaks it.
Where they put the regulator, but that's a另 question.
Maybe they're split, and you have one side and the other side or something.
Sounds like we're fixing it with a broad brush, potentially.
I mean, anyway, if you can, you know, just, I don't know, just look into it and see what's-
I'd like, I'd like to see whoever can handle pressure, put a regulator on their side of the meter and.
Maybe you could provide the names of those unhappy about the pressure so that they know which ones are not getting what they want as well.
How many people are having pressure? A lot.
He didn't give me a number of how many, he said, he generalized everybody's pressure is half of what it was.
And I do believe that's correct, but I don't know if.
No, I was just curious because it was just two, it's just.
But it's been an ongoing thing for a couple of months, of course, during the height end of the season and everybody using their barracks, so. I know we're tackling it late, but something. And you said one person called too, right? Didn't Tammy call?
She called me, yeah.
So we did have one barrack resident call city hall as well, so.
Well, she called me on a week. But that's okay, I don't mind, I like that.
Cool. Anything else, Brett?
Well, I think the first step would be that Terry emails Mike and then he can give us a response.
It's a good idea, I think I'll do that, I'll copy everybody so you know I did it, okay?
You always copy everybody.
All right, all right, I'll let him know. Okay, anybody have anything else?
I have one thing.
Okay.
We need our roof looked at here at city hall. A week ago when it rained, couldn't figure out why the papers on the city clerk's desk was.
Yeah, she keeps on spilling her drink.
I mean, the ink was all smeared and the papers crumpled up, you know how it gets wet, so anyway, I asked Amy last night when she was here and she was gonna give me the name of who they used for the building next door, but I mean, you can see right above you, there's.
That's a good spot for it right there.
I'll be all wet here before.
I wonder if they can also run a cat five cable one there.
So anyway, just so you know, there's probably some expense coming up with, these roofs are not cheap to work on, just F Y I, so.
We'll need to get some bids for it. Okay, the only thing I got is a letter from Mission Valley High School after prom thanking us for our donation last year. And they are starting their procedure and looking for donations for the next after prom party in April of twenty twenty-six, so that doesn't have to be decided on tonight, but be aware of it, okay? Does anybody else have anything else?
Yes, I do, so at the last meeting I had brought up the dumpsters and we were gonna look at the price of what the dumpster was. You got back with the spring cost at five thousand forty dollars?
Yes, correct.
And that was for two months, right? Because we had the dumpster for two months.
Like April, May and June.
So way longer than that.
Three months, probably.
Three months.
I would be in favor.
So are we in favor of getting a dumpster for two weeks in the fall?
We're even above, just for cleanup purposes.
Are we gonna specify that it's for like the residents and not for businesses since last time?
Well, we could police that, but we still don't have the cameras fixed. That, the cameras are on that to police that and Sally was policing that, she pulled out tires and all types of stuff the last time that we had it, right? Yeah, I'm posting, but they shouldn't put it in there, yeah, so she did the best that she could, but unless you're standing there twenty-four seven, people are gonna get away with it. But if we get the cameras fixed before we get the dumpster, then we should be able to hold people accountable there.
When do we want to do it?
It's September.
Day after the cameras are fixed.
Bingo. Except we've been waiting on that since March, so I don't want to wait till next March. Anyway, so just.
Tools.
Want to do it?
We don't have those tools. Thing with his personal tools, which he wasn't using.
I have a question.
Just feel like the city, so he took them home.
What's your question, Chris?
Sorry, relating to businesses and dumpsters, we haven't had our store open very long. We pay for a dumpster at the church, I also know that if you're a resident, you get like a can or something. Do I get a can or do I need that? And then we've always had a dump trailer in the back, but now we don't really need it anymore. How do I dump my trash from my store? Do I get my own personal dumpster?
For your store, you have your own personal dumpster.
Okay, I just, nobody else had it, but I didn't know.
Since the church is.
That's residential, I.
Well, but since the church is reverted to residential, we could put you on the route as a residential customer and you wouldn't have to pay for your dumpster.
Yeah, because we've been done with construction over there forever and ever.
So I mean, just come in and remind us and we'll, we'll, we'll change that to, and, and add the trash cart on the church, but the, but the dumpster at the store.
So the dumpster I'm paying at the church, I could just move over here and keep paying for it and then I could get on the car. No, but I'm just saying I can get on the car.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I have something, um, that you brought up tonight, um. It's always been bothersome to me, number one, that we allow people to call in for a meeting. But I very strongly believe that the call, the phone should not be in executive session. I don't care who it is, if it's me or anybody else, I don't think that that should be allowed in our executive session. We have absolutely no way of knowing if the call is being recorded, if somebody else is listening in, we have no idea what's on the other side of the phone call. And just to guarantee our own privacy, I don't think it should be allowed, go inform them.
I think that's a tough question.
You too, we'll get a legal answer next week.
Given the way COVID went, we were all on the phone.
Right, well, that BS is over, well, thank God.
Sounds like she's ill now, so. It's going around again if you didn't know.
Okay, what's next?
Uh, the Alma yearly I T expenditures that we requested at the last meeting, did we have any of those?
Are you looking at me? What was the request, Brett?
I believe Annie requested the Alma yearly I T expenditures.
Did I?
I know we talked about asking for it.
I know we asked for it.
Yeah, we asked, we asked for it, um, if we, if we could get those, that kind of helps judge what we're spending now.
Was that at the special meeting?
No, that was at the meeting when Terry and Tim were gone.
Twenty-fifth of August.
The last meeting that we had.
I apologize, I missed that, so, I don't, I don't remember asking that question.
I, I remember asking.
Not last meeting.
Man, I, I don't remember which meeting it was at, but I remember we asked for it.
I did, I, not just I T, to clarify, if we're doing that, we're talking about Microsoft Office and everything else.
Everything else, everything they spend.
Individually.
Not, not just what they pay their I T professional.
Right.
Annie come and asked about reports, Lisa had mentioned that the previous work session needs to reach out to the city of Alma, but the reports don't reflect.
That was G Works. That was G Works.
That's why I don't remember.
And ways to cut it.
I'm reading the wrong one, but anyway, if you forget that.
I know, I was asking about G Works, so we were trying to find a way, budget, budget to be able to be separated out there. Which she did ask about.
We just passed the minutes that doesn't specify you were talking about G Works though.
Sorry, I didn't get from that.
I'm gonna do a J R.
Uh, no.
He's not done yet.
The city boat, we talked about it at the last meeting, we talked about having for sale over the holiday weekend, did we do that?
We, we didn't get a chance to do that.
Do we know?
And that's, that's on me, um, and I'm getting with the guys, um, to get all of that set up. So we had, we should have all that together here shortly and, and my thought is, we're gonna have a, probably a sealed bid list for the vehicles here at city hall if people can come in.
Like that new trailer also?
Yeah, I think the trailer too, because we don't really have a need for it.
That you did say last meeting.
So, but I didn't get a chance to do that, I was down all this week, so.
Okay. Robin's truck, so everybody got the email about Robin's truck they were.
I heard about it tonight, so I was gonna go look at it after.
So she is unable to work without a vehicle, so we need to get her the key.
I believe they've been running vehicle down to maintenance shop.
Right, it just.
She needs the key.
Do you know where the key is, Lisa? And Sally, you should know, right? As far as I know, they're down at the shop.
Okay.
So she needs to get that in order to play, so she can have the stuff for the next meeting. Could be the clutch and, or some other things.
We should think about what we want to do with that house at the lake.
Correct. Are you thinking about renting it?
That's an option.
Or tear it down?
No, why would you tear it down? Turn it into a museum, an Airbnb.
Permit office, I live year round.
I will. I love Airbnb.
Get a couple cabins out the lake, let her.
I have, actually haven't been in it for years, but according to employees, it is a piece of crap and we will never get anybody to live in it. I mean, not what they says.
Let's take a tour.
Nobody but John Taylor would live in it, it's a piece of crap, so maybe we should all go look.
I lived in it.
So you did that.
And we didn't doubt of it because tar ran down the wall and it's gonna be, we moved out and built a new house.
That's featured.
And they've been shingling it ever since, so what, what, what did it, what's the address?
Thirty, forty years ago. The caretaker did, that was part of their compensation was living in the house.
Well, I kinda was just planting the seed, maybe we let it blossom next meeting?
I don't think this is the meeting.
Sure, no, I don't need it, I'm gonna continue. Um, we do need a base for the sidewalks for the sidewalk project that'll be happening within the month, he hasn't given a specific date of study. But we need to make sure that we have the base for that, um, I've reached out, but I've gotten no response back, so Terry, if you can email and ask if we have the base for the sidewalks for the plans that we have for the fall.
It's sand.
So if you could add that to that as well, because I need to know.
We just include that in future bids from here on out, is there a reason he doesn't just provide that?
Um, well, in the beginning, not providing it saved us a lot of money, so.
Don't think we're really getting that discount anymore.
I don't know, I think we are and his work is pretty quality work. Um, I think maybe they just don't want to do the base and haul it down there, but I could be wrong. But moving forward, um, the curb at the beach, has everybody looked at that bid? Because I passed it out a couple, like, lower a month ago.
Yeah, I went down and looked, I know I've gotten a chance to go have a look at it. Now, it's, the, the curb that he's talking about is that the hole into the beach and all the way past, basically a parking curb right along there. And that was the one, uh, thirteen, how much was that?
Thirteen five.
Thirteen five, the other one was he talking about just raising the top step?
Right.
Uh, no lip on the sidewalk side of that at all?
Right, well, there is already a lip, when you come down, it's about this big, so it's gonna be pretty treacherous.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it gonna be like a handicap access or something to get like strollers and whatnot on the other side of that?
I'm, the way, the way that I would think of it, you'd come around in front of the van. Will run, if, if I'm thinking right.
Mm-hmm.
So that it, you put in the kayaks and it drains to the boat ramp. Instead of, because it's already washed away.
Put it, put in the kayaks.
Sweet.
It's where a lot of people put in the kayaks is right there.
Okay, a lot of people put kayaks in where it's wet.
True, but that is an official place where they put them in, so they'll want to move forward because he will be doing that project at the same time that he's doing the other one, just because he's in the area.
I think the curb might be the better way to go, it's definitely more expensive. Um, but it would, it would be a positive parking stop for everybody as well as a water diverger. But it's thirteen grand.
And we have plenty in the lake fund. So I just looked at that today.
Will that dip into our responsibilities for?
No, that's a different account.
I don't know, but we just spent twenty-seven hundred dollars replacing sand that it's washing out right as we speak.
Right.
Well, and another twenty-seven hundred dollars that we spent on buoys tonight.
Yeah, that, this won't have any.
But that's not reflected in the balance of the cash of your lake fund.
But there's a hundred and sixty thousand there, we would have to.
Sure, we can run some water lines for the camper and that.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to amend the budget.
Right.
Because you only have forty-six thousand dollars of budget that's already left in the lake.
I'm gonna move to approve the curb at the bay, at the beach.
But there's two bids, right? So which bid?
The thirteen five.
Is that the rock one or the concrete one?
Concrete. And it's, it's basically a parking.
I haven't got the rock at all.
I will second that.
So repeat your motion in full, please.
I move to approve the thirteen thousand five hundred bid for the curb and gutter at the beach in Bay Shop.
Seconded by Tim.
Affirmative.
Those in favor? Motion passes.
Still motion on the floor. I wanna frack and rid of it.
He's on the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um.
He's, he's got a half a page left.
So it's the one hundred and first fall festival and we have a dead tree at the park that has a post in it that needs to be cut down before the fall festival. I don't know if we can cut the tree down and just leave the stump of the post and figure out how to get.
Cut a leg of the post and then let the dead.
Exactly, but it needs to be taken care of before the fall festival, is what I'm pointing.
And then burn the rest out, you know, have, have a, cook some more.
Where's this tree, Brett?
The north side of the park.
It's pretty obvious.
Before you get to the tennis court, but on the other side of the creek.
Okay.
And it's, it's been dead so many years that larger branches are falling.
For no reason. Because it died right out.
It needs to go quickly.
Now we got a cool curb in the sidewalk.
It's got like a curve in the sidewalk.
Let's make a tackle there. I'll forego the rest of it.
Somebody come in carve this thing for us, who's got a car for it?
Yes.
Can you get money for that project? I'm gonna carve a stump.
Did I see the painter?
Huh?
Did I see the fireplace?
Yes, why?
And you didn't get them.
They were just in my messenger though, so I was Facebook messaging.
I'll send them to you, just put them on the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion.
You done, right?
I am, I just had a question, is he right now who the new fire chief is since John Taylor moved?
I thought Drew Kemp was fire chief.
No, John Taylor was fire chief.
Has been for years.
Drew were assistants.
Is it, I don't know, I guess I read that.
Because he used to tell me whenever there was anything at the lake.
I was just curious.
To know, is anybody on the fire department?
Joe said something.
Uh, I think they're voter.
We don't know yet then. There you go.
Hey, motion to adjourn by Tim and seconded by Brett.
We have Jason.
Good enough.
Close enough. Close enough. Sent by Jason. Those in favor? We are adjourned.
Bye bye. Just trying to drain y'all, you're not listening.
I don't wear lips, so you gotta write something down or something.
It's always an attack.